If you were in when the song was playing, anybody know what the song was? Thank you. And who sings that?
Lauren Daigle.
Lauren Daigle. And which post commissioner loves that song? It's one of their two favorites.
Chuck Hard.
Got it. Okay. Deidre, you're on a roll. Baker Street and I are big music fans, and so we'll start asking you all what your favorite songs are. We'll play them before we get started. But I will call the Paulding County Board of Commissioners' April 23 work session to order. And thank you all for being here. Recognize elected officials, which would be Sheriff Gary Gullidge and City Councilman Jimmy. Good to have you, Jimmy Hinson. And anybody else I missed? All right. Well, everybody's special here. And Brian, if you would bring forth the list of people wishing to speak. And also ask, Pastor Johnny McBurroughs from Shiloh Missionary Baptist Church to come to the podium and lead us in our invocation, and also in our pledge to flag stand if you're able.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Board of Commissions. We greet you in the name of our Lord. Let us pray. Our Father and our God, again, we come before you. We thank you, Lord God, for the blessings we enjoy day by day through your grace and your mercy. As we come now, Lord God, we ask you for guidance, spiritual wisdom, to do those things that are pleasing, that make sense, Lord God, that bless the citizens of Paulding County. We lift up this board, Lord God. We lift up this great nation. We lift up all of our public officials, asking you, Lord God, to walk with them and talk with them, that they may do the job that they was elected to do. We will also give you the praise, glory, and honor. We ask this all in the wonderful name of the Savior we pray. Amen. Let us pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor McBurroughs. He said he's still wearing his Easter attire, and not only on his back, but in his heart, for sure. Thank you for being here. The April 9, 2019 work session minutes and the April 9, 2019 board meeting minutes, and the April 12, 2019 special call meeting minutes are available for review. Under announcements this morning, we had five of our staff, Chief Trevor Hess, Steve Goss, Eileen Culberson, who's the Animal Control Director, there she is, and Austin Haygood and Steve Grimsley, all went to the Capitol, I'm sorry, they went to the Governor's mansion, and participated in a little adoption effort. So let's watch that.
Hey, Paulding County, it's Eileen from Animal Control.
And Chief Hess from the Paulding County Marshals Bureau.
We are coming to you today from the mansion here at the Governor's. You can see, if you can see around us, but we are here adopting out animals. We've got nine dogs here with us today, and four cats and two kittens, and we're hoping they all get out of here and find a good home today. We already had our first adoption, and that was Sandy, had to be a veteran of the military. We're so happy that we can make his day.
We're having a great time. We love being here, and it's a great event. Glad to be representing for Paulding County.
Marty Kemp here. So glad to be with Paulding County today, this Pet Adoption Day, with some great animals to get taken home. We've had a lot of adoptions today. We're very excited. They had the first adoption today, so we are very, very proud to have them here.
Awesome. Moose Dog, they were very healthy, didn't they? Next on, under the announcements, I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Ron Davis to lift up something that's going to occur this Friday.
Thanks, Dave. There's an organization in Paulding County called Alternative Baseball. It's an organization started by a young man with autism who wanted to provide a place for folks on the spectrum and with other special needs to be able to play ball and be accepted as they are, and be encouraged in their efforts on the field. And they have an organization, it's based here in Paulding, but it actually reaches internationally now, and across many states, and there are teams that compete. And I say compete, these fellows come out and they play hard. Friday night at 7:00 at the New Georgia Ballpark, that's on Highway 61, just North Ridge Road, they're having the Paulding Celebrity Classic. And this is a game that one of their All-Star teams is playing, some folks from around the county that they call celebrities. I don't know, Dave and I played last year. I don't know, celebrity might be a stretch, but there's some folks around the county that they're going to be playing against a team from this organization. And we went last year, I was telling Sandy before this, I was going and I expected a, you know, fun game, you know, have a good time, and showed up warming up a little bit, and those boys came to play. And we got a big lead on them, and they just kept chipping away at us, and actually came back and beat us in the last inning. And certain state representatives struck out to end the game. I won't embarrass Martin in front of everybody, but, I mean, the winning run was on base, and he struck out. It was bad. But anyway, if you have a chance on Friday night at 7:00, go check out that game and meet the folks with that organization. It'll be a good time, and the commissioners won't be able to be part of it. We will be in Savannah with our annual ACCG Conference and Training this weekend. We had a scheduling conflict, but I know there's some folks from around the county, different departments, who are going to be participating there. So go check them out. 7:00, New Georgia Ballpark on Friday, April 26.
Thank you, Ron, very much. We got Ms. Mona Shorter here. So glad to have you here, Mona, with the United States Census Bureau regarding the 2020 census coming up. So it's right around the corner, isn't it? It's really already on us.
Hi, thank you for having me. My name is Mona Shorter. Like I said, I am a recruiting assistant with the U.S. Census Bureau, and I'm just here today to bring awareness that the census is around the corner, 2020. And right now, we're laying the foundation to get people acclimated that we're here, and how important the surveys are to return starting January 2020. You know, we bring an awareness because of the census surveys allows the county, the community, to know the social, the demographic conditions that we're in. And it also allocates the, I'm sorry, it also allows the allocation of federal funding. So that's our main purpose, is to get people to apply, to get people aware of what the census is all about. Just if you have time, anybody, if you have time, you go to our website, 2020census.gov, to learn more about the census and why it's important, why this survey is important to return in the allocated amount of time. And also, we'll have people coming out, once those forms are not submitted back, we will have them coming out in 2020. The cutoff date is going to be September 2020 to have those surveys in. If you have any questions for me?
A couple of specifics on having an accurate census and how that will help out our county is either financially or...
Yes, the federal funds, that's how they're allocated for our different demographics in your area, to help our childcare, our healthcare, and also it determines the seats for the House of Representatives. And also, to bring awareness to the jobs that we have available in the area. You can go to 2020census.gov/jobs to see what we have available to help out the community.
Any other questions for Ms. Shorter? How far do you have to drive to get out here to Paulding County?
About 30 minutes.
Okay, well, thanks for giving us the time and giving us that report and come back.
Thanks for having me.
The Board of Commissioners would like to present the Safe Digging Proclamation to Michael Creighton with Greystone Power and Joe Ordway with AT&amp;T. And George may want to add a little more about this Safe Digging Proclamation. Thank you for bringing us a report, Michael. And just while y'all are getting up here, I'm going to go in and read this and get that part of it out of the way. It's Safe Digging Month. Whereas thousands of times each year, the underground infrastructure in Georgia is damaged by those who do not have underground lines located prior to digging, resulting in service interruption, environmental damage, and threat to public safety. And whereas in 2005, the FCC, the Federal Communications Commission designated 811 to provide contractors, or I'm sorry, designate 811, to provide contractors and homeowners, a simple number to contact utility operators to request the location of underground lines at the intended dig site. And whereas the Paulding County Utility Coordinating Committee, a stakeholder-driven organization dedicated to prevention of damage to underground utilities in Georgia, promotes the National 811 Notification System in an effort to reduce these dangers. And whereas damage prevention is a shared responsibility by using safe digging practices, that the contractors and homeowners of Paulding County, Georgia can save time, money, and help keep our infrastructure safe and connected. Now therefore, I hereby proclaim on behalf of Paulding County, the month April 2019 is Safe Digging Month, and encourage contractors and homeowners throughout Paulding County to call 811 before digging. Safe digging is no accident. Kathy, you want to say anything?
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Oh, I'm sorry. I heard you wrong. Good morning. How is everybody? Yeah, I'm tall, sorry.
Good. How are you?
Good. How is everybody? I'm just part of the Paulding UCC. I'm not, Michael Creighton is our president, and then Joe Ordway is our vice president. So we had worked to try to make a proclamation. It's an initiative by the Georgia 811, to be able to allow some funding for our monthly UCC meeting. So we wanted to promote, you know, the 811 initiative for all the contractors to be able to, so that the citizens understand that you need to call before you dig. It's very important, since that we don't have any issues, any hits, or any damages out there. So we just wanted to bring that before the board and let everybody know what's going on in the county.
Thank you so much. I thought, I didn't see the, turn that around, so I didn't see it there. Where are you going to put that? Right there on that UCC.
Are you hanging over there?
Thank y'all for sharing that. So I'm going to go out and go over there where you stood. On behalf of Paulding County, I can speak on behalf of everybody, we really, I can thank y'all for recognizing that it's a late safety proclamation. It's very important to this. Me and Joe may have the titles, but it is a joint effort with so many hands in it that make this a success. Well, it's very, very important. Appreciate it. You bet. Y'all slide over a little bit to your right. Thanks, Karen. And our last announcement is, the Board of Commissioners would like to present the Public Safety Appreciation Award to firefighter Casey Dearman with the Paulding County Fire Department. And Chief Pelfrey is going to help with this one. This award's presented to Casey Dearman in recognition of outstanding service to his community, presented by the Paulding County Board of Commissioners. 23rd day of April 2019, signed by all of us.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
It's my pleasure to introduce you to firefighter Casey Dearman. Casey joined our department in 2016. He attended our rookie class, our recruit class, and was very successful with that, and he's excelled with that. And once he received his certification, he was placed in a fire station to work to continue his career path and be an asset to the department. And that is just not overstated. He has been a true asset to the department. He's taken many classes. They have to have classes for their career paths within a department, but we've looked back and some of the guys checked, and he's taken over 30 classes since 2016. So I believe that tells you a little bit about his dedication and what it means to us, and apparently what it means to him to be able to advance his career. He's taken all these classes, and some of the ones he's taken, he's taken actually some classes that he didn't even need to take. I mean, he wants to just improve himself and advance himself in his career. He's taken some technical rescue classes, swift water classes, rope technician. These are all advanced classes. This is for advanced responses. He's also attended several fire conferences in the state of Georgia and Alabama on his own. So he has a great need for advancement. Casey's currently signed up as a Fire Apparatus Operator Certification Class, and he's also been accepted in our First Emergency Medical Technician Class. Firefighter Dearman works with a very enthusiastic attitude, and this attitude is not only noticed within a department by other instructors as well throughout the state. We've received emails and calls stating what a great young man he is, and a great student, and how he participates in the class. Casey, after he got out of the recruit class, he went on his own and realized that once you come out of a recruit class, it's hard for employees to know how to get used to station life. It's different. You try to prepare them in these recruit classes, but they're really not able to understand what they need to do. So Casey went on his own, and he presents to the newly class. Now he comes and presents a class to them to explain what it's like for station life. And that's very important, and we've incorporated that in all of our recruit classes since he's done that. Casey's also a certified self-contained breathing apparatus technician. He can be seen every shift repairing and maintaining our SCBA's, which is our most vital piece of safety equipment for our personnel as they operate in hazardous atmospheres. This is also a class that he volunteered to take. You have to go through a class and get certified by the company, and it's, like I said, it's very important for these guys to have working equipment out in these atmospheres, and he volunteered to do that as well. I don't see Casey much out in the field when they leave, and I don't see him much, but I do ask about employees a lot. And when I ask about Casey, they brighten up and say that Casey's one of the good ones, and we're so happy to have him. He's dedicated, and they have nothing but great things to say about him. He's a true example of dedicated and enthusiastic firefighter, and he's very early in his career, and I see nothing but great things happening for Casey. His work ethic sets great examples for others in the career service, and I'm just so proud of him. When he came in, I liked him. He's got an infectious smile, like he's got right now on his face, and we're just so proud to have him. And if I had about 25 more of him, I'd be one of the happiest fire chiefs around. So Casey, thank you so much for everything you do for Paulding County.
Congratulations. Don't let Sheriff Gullidge steal in there, Joey. We have no invited guests this morning, and bid awards, we have none. Reports from committees and departments, we're very glad to have Ms. Amy Tisschencheck here from CPS Comprehensive Program Services to give us an update on the jails. So we get a little bit different look and face and presentation this morning. Amy, thanks for coming.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. One of the biggest things I want to say today is, we have good weather, finally. I think that's been kind of a change from what you've heard over the last several months with the jail update. It's really been weather, weather, weather impacts, you know, for the project for the last several months. And I think we are finally at a point now where we're kind of, we're in good shape. The building is, as you can tell, is almost dried in, so it is, we're in good shape. All right, great. So as you can see, if you go on the jail website, it's pauldingjail.com, you'll be able to take a look at the job site camera that's been installed, and you'll see great progress on the outside. I'll talk a little bit more in depth on the progress of the project, but in case any of you don't know, the website is up and running. You can find out more details on the project itself, and also there's a job site camera that you can kind of track the progress over time. Budget update, we have not changed since the last update last month. Change Order Number Two, which incorporated the rock, was incorporated at that time of the last update. Construction contingency, where we are, it's just over 655,000. And then the owner's contingency has not changed, and that was $250,000. Cost impacts that we're tracking right now, one of the biggest, kind of the unknowns, was the remediation of subsurface conditions at the visitor's center. We've done a lot of test pits and a lot of investigation on the original proposed site of the visitor's center that came back, where there was a lot of organic material, which made us kind of step back, take a look at another resolution. So what we've come up with is actually moving that visitor's center about 250 feet to the west. We've done test pits in that location, and the organics is significantly less. So we are looking into further detail on that, and I believe that's going to be the ultimate solution. That'll be a lot less costly for you all, and then also it won't change any operational items for the sheriff's office. Excess soils that we have, we are still working through that, but the ultimate decision was to keep as much soil on-site as we can. There's really no need to haul it off-site because it's a lot more expensive if we do that. And then the third item is the high-speed bifold door. We have released the construction team to go ahead with shop drawings and the initial documentation that's needed for these doors. But the sheriff's office is, this is a very needed item for the sheriff's office, that we really need to work towards getting this in the budget. All right, progress. CMU masonry, that's the biggest bulk of the work right now in the detention side. So in the housing area and the support area, if you were to go in there at this point, you'll see a lot of blockwork, and that's going to continue through June. That's what all the interior walls are. The interior walls are fully grouted, masonry walls. So it's a lot of work that will be continuing. Roofing at the law enforcement center is nearing completion. Sliders and the mezzanines have been installed and will continue to be installed in the day rooms. Overhead electrical in the housing area is complete, and ductwork continues to be installed. Couple update progress photos. So I think at the last update, you saw some of the steel cells that were installed. What's going on now in the day rooms is that the sliders, which are the doors, have been installed. The mezzanines and the stairways are working to be installed. So those day rooms now are really starting to kind of come to life, if you will. And that'll progress over the next several months, getting those final installation completed. Here's another photo of what the sliders look like, and then also the inside of the day room cells. They've gotten all of the lighting installed, and they've gotten all of the hookups, the plumbing hookups on the backside installed. And then at the law enforcement center, fireproofing and metal stud construction has started. The law enforcement center is really where you're going to see a lot of the more, I guess, conventional, more office-type construction. So it's a lot of stud walls. So over the next couple of months, you'll really see that portion of the facility come to life. And then scheduled updates, there has not been any updates to the overall dates since the last meeting, but again, the interior masonry, looking at completing that in June. Law enforcement center is going to finish it up right after that in July. Still looking at a January 27 substantial completion date, and then March final completion. All right? Any questions? I did want to let everybody know, we are looking at having a drying-in party. It's probably going to be later next month. That will give you the opportunity to come in and take a look around and see the progress for yourself. We'll also invite, you know, the public to come in as well. So that'll give them the opportunity to take a peek inside and see what's going on on the inside.
That's a chance to get in the jail without being actually booked.
Exactly. Yes, that's definitely the time you want to be in there.
Amy, you mentioned the subservice conditions in a range there from 50 to 100, but what would cause it to be right or left there?
The amount of organic soils. So the original location that we were looking in had anywhere from six to 13 feet of organic materials, right under where the foundation was to be. Moving that to the west actually got us out of a good portion of that. So we're feeling right now, we're probably going to be around 65 by moving that over, but the range is due to the amount of organic material that needs to be hauled off.
Any other questions? Thanks again for the report.
All right. Thank you.
We have no one that's signed up for participation in the agenda items. The consent agenda has five items required to read those. Number one is declare the attached listed items as surplus and approve their disposal through auction or trade. And Rebecca, we do have a video that's going to go with this, but you understand. That was my understanding. We were going to have a picture or a video of these items. While Felicia's checking, I'll go on and read the others. Number two is to amend the Paulding County Board of Commissioners' regular, to amend the Paulding County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting schedule to change the Tuesday, June 11, 2019 meetings at 10:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. to Thursday, June 13, 2019, at the same times 10:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m., due to training that's required. Number three is to appoint Helene M. Fitzgerald to fill the unexpired term of Michael Sudan on the Planning and Zoning Commission, with the term ending December 31, 2019. Number four is to approve and authorize the chairman to execute the intergovernment agreement with the city of Dallas for Paulding County to conduct the municipal election for the city of Dallas. Number five is to approve the No Cost Change, the No Cost Change Order, number two, to the contract with Mid-South Builders Incorporated for the State Route 92 South Water Main relocation. So for those interested, the list of surplus items are available. Are they available in the back? So we'll have to read all those. You can grab a copy. Okay, that's all the consent agenda items. Would any of the Commissioners like to place any of those five items? Would any of the commissioners like to place any of those five items on regular new business?
I think it'll make sense, if we can, in the future. We used to read those numbers, just for the public's benefit, we used to read those numbers, and sometimes there's a lot of them, there's, I don't know, 15 of them on there today, and those serial numbers of vehicles, it's easy to get tongue-tied in reading them, and it's easy to fall asleep while someone else is reading them. So there was an effort to just maybe not have to do that, but I think in the, in doing that, we inadvertently pulled that, it inadvertently got taken off of the agenda that gets published to the website before every meeting. So could we just publish, publish that list when we publish the agenda to the website in the future? It is on the website, one? Okay. All right, thank you.
So if you could not hear, Rebecca, our clerk said that it is on the website. We have no old business, new business. Number one is discuss action to approve a contract amendment with Tetra Tech for detailed design, a sequence of construction, permitting, bidding and construction phase services for the copper mine WRF membrane expansion project in the amount of $908,000. And Ms. Ashmore is gonna help us out with several of these new business items.
Good morning. As we've previously discussed, the copper mine treatment plant is beyond its 80% utilization, and it is continuing to grow, continuing to see increased flows. So in the fall of 2018, we entered into a contract with Tetra Tech for preliminary engineering of that expansion. And today, and we've completed the preliminary engineering alternatives analysis and have previously provided that to you. This scope is the remaining engineering services for the expansion, including the detailed design, taking us through bidding, construction administration, and through, and through getting our ass built at the end of the project. It includes the survey and the geotechnical work that's necessary to support it. The elements of the expansion, we think about, well, we're adding membranes, but it's not quite so clear-cut or simple. We're adding membranes, we have a bridge crane for maintenance of those, of those membranes, a chemical storage tanks and feed systems, disinfection of that additional flow. So a couple of meetings ago, we talked about UV lamps. We're gonna need to add more UV capability in the system. Sledge holding tank, we're gonna need another sledge holding tank to accommodate the additional residuals that'll be produced by the process, and another centrifuge. In that alternatives analysis, we actually looked at, was it better to add equipment and continue to run on a day shift basis, or to run the existing equipment longer hours over time? And our economic analysis showed that it was better at this point to add a centrifuge, and that it would pay back in just a couple of years. Then, we also have the electrical and instrumentation systems to support the treatment process. I've got Lauren Springer with Tetra Tech and Russell Kelly, our treatment division manager, are here with me this morning, if you have any questions. Regarding schedule, the design effort is about a six-month process, but we're talking about a 24-month process before we have capacity online. So that's why it's been a high priority to continue this process and push forward with the expansion of copper mine. I didn't mention, we have the permit for this. This is not something that the state will, we will submit drawings to the state for the expansion, but there's no modification in our discharge permit that will have to be done. And so, the, our recommendation is for this contract amendment for the membrane expansion project in the amount of $908,000. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them, or turn to other folks to have them come up and answer them.
So Ms. Springer is with Tetra Tech?
Yes.
How far do you have to come to that?
Only about 40 minutes.
It's good to have you here, Lauren. Any questions? Okay, we're going to number two, is discuss action to approve the amendment, number three, to the contract with Atkins North American Incorporated for the State Route 92 South Water Main relocation in the amount of $50,700. Laurie?
Okay. I'd like to just start by giving you a, just an overall project update on our utility relocation on 92. Overall, we're projecting that we're about $271,000 under our contracted amounts for this project. We are, we have in that, in the item on your consent agenda today for Atkins, we are addressing both the, both some additional line items, as well as some additional time. We've all been talking about rain, but there were other associated, other impacts in coordination with road contractor that have impacted the schedule. This contract amendment with Atkins is an extension of our inspection services for an additional 50 days. We have a longer extension, but because of the management of staff resources, we have been able to see some savings on the original contract, but not enough to cover the full contract extension. So we're asking for an additional, additional 400 hours of inspection and 50 hours of construction management or office support for a total of $50,700.
Any questions? Number three is discuss action to approve the amendment number one to the intergovernmental wastewater treatment agreement for the Sweetwater Creek Basin with Cobb County, Georgia.
Hopefully, it's coming up. In the, we have a couple of agreements with Cobb County for wastewater service in areas along the Cobb County-Paulding County line. And our Sweetwater Agreement generally serves an area of the southernmost part of the county, and it's through an interconnection along Pine Valley Road. We have a, we had a zoning and a proposed development in this area of, that's, the area in orange is generally bounded by Smith Road and Poplar Springs, north of Mackland. And this is an area that would flow by gravity to Cobb County for wastewater treatment. We have, in front of you this morning, amendment number one to our Sweetwater Creek Basin Agreement for service to this area, and it would be able to serve the, this, the R-55 community that is proposed along Mackland Road, and they would be constructing that outfall to reach Cobb County. The one thing that, there is a provision in this, that any development that we would propose connecting under this agreement in this Powder Creek Basin, that we would submit that to Cobb County prior to approving, we have, for them to evaluate their ability to serve it and to, and to give us their concurrence with that. We don't have that provision on the southern end of the county, because we have worked with Cobb prior to that agreement and in the initial stages of that agreement to ensure that that conveyance capacity exists. And in fact, we participated in the cost of that conveyance system in that, the south
Any questions?
Well, I'll just make a comment. Laurie, I know this has been going on for a little while, and I appreciate, I know you and your staff put a lot of effort into this, and I also appreciate the folks over in Cobb County. I know they've had a lot going on. This is going to help, help things in that area, and it's, and you look at the map and you're like, oh, it's a little rectangular, it's gonna be added to it, but it's so much more than what seems to be here, and I know that, and I know you know that, but I just wanna say, I appreciate that, and I appreciate the working with Cobb County and their, and their cooperation in this, as we look to serve the people in this area. It's gonna be a good thing.
Is Cobb County on board with this?
Cobb County is on board. I believe they will address this at their first meeting in May, following your approval.
Is this the area that will serve the senior living?
Yes, the active adult R-55 that was zoned last fall is on, is along Mackland here, and it will also, I believe they're also going to be providing access through their development to the church that has struggled so much for the last few years with their disposal system.
They are. The church, the folks at the church are really excited about it. They've been running on a dilapidated septic system, and have been, I think, shortly after I was elected the pastor, that church reached out to me and it asked about connecting the sewer, and it just wasn't there, and it wasn't feasible for the church to bring it there. So this is gonna be a win-win for those in that area.
Cobb County, how do they, how do we pay sewage in their area?
We actually have a, set up charge codes in our system, and it will be a monthly payment to Cobb. We'll actually pull those, pull the customers who are tributary to this in that charge code, total their usage, and then send that forward. And we have forms from Cobb for any connections in our area, so that they know who, they know who's connected and that we transfer the appropriate tab fees.
Any other questions? Thanks so much, Ms. Ashmore. So we'll pass the baton to our Paulding County DOT Director, George Jones, and number four is discuss action to authorize the chairman to enter into an agreement with Heath and Lineback Engineers Incorporated for the engineering services master agreement in the amount of $250,000 for a one-year period, with the option to renew upon approval of additional funding. Services will be used for preliminary engineering or transportation SPOLOST projects. Mr. Jones?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Again, like you said, this is for on-call engineering services. Work includes project scoping, conceptual development, preliminary plans, final plans. We just don't have the staff right at this point to be able to handle all the requests, our regular work, and also progress and forward projects. So this is an effective way for us, the DOT, to move projects along. Using an on-call consultant is a good way to do this, because they can also provide services that we don't have in-house. They have specialty areas such as bridges, things that we don't have, that type of expertise. So it's a, it's a good, it's good for us. Heath and Lineback has performed, you know, multiple areas of work for us over the years, and we've been very happy with their responsiveness and quality of work. This is our second renewal of services. This was first, I think, brought for the board in September of 2016, and then again in December of 2017. So it's our second renewal, and like I said, we just asked that you approve the funding in the amount of $250,000 for this.
Pay as you go. If you don't use that much, you just pay for what you use.
Exactly. We're paying for the hours and services that we utilize.
Questions, comments? Okay, number five is discuss action to authorize the chairman to enter into an agreement with Heath and Lineback Engineers Incorporated for the engineering services master agreement in an amount not to exceed $500,000 for a three-year period, with the option to renew upon approval of additional funding. Services will be used for conceptual, preliminary, and final engineering of State Route 6, operational and safety improvement project along State Route 6, from Atlanta Highway SR 6 Business to Poplar Springs Road, Dale Cruz Parkway.
Little background, this section of, you know, US 278, more commonly known rather than State Route 6, is the most heavily-traveled road in the county. About 38,000 vehicles per day on that section of roadway. There are no current plans, the state has to widen the roadway. In an attempt to improve operation, we're gonna work with a consultant to look at potential solutions, to provide progression, reduce delays, and increase safety along the corridor. We're working in partnership with the city of Hiram and the Georgia Department of Transportation on this project. In our SPOLOST program, we had proposed to set aside $4.3 million for potential improvements along this section of corridor. Our first part of our project is basically collect data, look at the existing conditions, evaluate and identify potential project solutions to go forward with. You know, we're gonna investigate such strategies as access management, traffic signal modifications, removing traffic signals, interparcial access, intersection reconfiguration. There's a whole lot of things that are out there, we just gotta kinda look at what we think would work, and also basically model it and see what we can come up with as the best solutions, and go forward with that. You know, projects will be divided into short-term, mid-term, and long-term, based on the complexity, time, and the amount of money involved for each type of project. We're looking to develop and construct projects, again, to improve the traffic flow and conditions on the corridor. It would be easy if we had unlimited funds and we could just widen the roadway. Unfortunately, we don't have that, so basically, we're trying to take what funds we do have and use those funds in the best way possible to improve the conditions on that corridor. I know it's partly in post one and post three, so like I said, this is the busiest road in the county, and I think what we can do out there and what potential improvements we can construct will be a huge benefit to most folks in this county. And I can answer, you know, any questions hopefully that you have on the project.
George, this is a case where you don't have to bid it out.
No, sir. We actually, you know, we put out a request for proposals last fall. Five different firms actually submitted requests. We interviewed three of those firms, and of those three firms, we dialed it down to the team of Heath and Lineback and Arcadis as the firm that best understood what we were going for with this project, and felt that they could give us the best project and the best engineering services.
Questions, comments? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
New business number six is discuss action to approve the increase in the material testing and special inspection service agreement with NOVA in the amount of $97,981.86 for the Paulding County Adult Detention and Law Enforcement Center. Mr. Green and Ms. Tissichak.
Thanks. I just wanted to introduce this for a minute and then let Amy take over. You just met Amy with our update. Just wanna say that quality control is extremely important on a project of this size. It's important on any project, but this project has a huge magnitude and implications. If we had quality problems or a breakdown, we're gonna have to live with it for a long time. So it's really important that we get the proper testing and inspection. We're using NOVA Engineering and Environmental. They are an independent firm checking the quality of the materials on the project and the contractor's performance, and they generate reports for us almost daily on this project. And that quantity varies on different projects and different conditions, and Amy will speak on that just a little bit more. In my view, testing is very good money spent to make sure that we're gonna have a excellent building when we're done that will serve us in many decades into the future. And we'll be glad to answer any questions after Amy's done. Thank you.
All right. So this request is to increase NOVA's contract amount by $97,981.86. So this request is to increase NOVA's contract amount by $97,981.86. The overages that we're seeing right now is basically due to a few big, big-ticket items. One was the unforeseen rock that we dealt with for a few months. They had to be out here on a daily basis while the blasting and the quantification of the rock was happening. I think that was about $33,000 of that over, over cost that we're seeing. A couple other items that were not foreseen were erosion testing and retests, which were ultimately caused by the, the increase in rain events that we've seen since the beginning of the project. Another one is the visitor's center upgrade. So they've actually had to do a lot more testing. They've had to really work with the contractor to come up with some recommendations on which way we should go as far as foundations and locations of the building. And then one line item that was not included in the original special inspections was floor flatness that we're also having them check throughout the project.
Thank you very much, Amy.
Thank you.
Scott?
Thanks.
That's the conclusion of regular business today. We do have a planning and zoning meeting scheduled for 2:00 this afternoon. We have no one who's signed up for non-agenda items today and we have no requirement for executive session. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn.
I'll move with you there.
Mr. Davis made that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, like Mr. Stover. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned.